Good evening. Guess I woke everybody up, didn't it? That was the purpose there. Today is January 11th, 2024. The time is now 5:36 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. And to all of you, Happy New Year. Obviously, we do have a quorum present. And we are asking Councilman Carolina to give us the invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Almighty and eternal God, we praise and thank you for calling us to serve your people. As we enter this new year, give us your anointing and help us not to seek power nor position, but rather make us a vessel of your grace to touch the lives of your people. Father, use us as a channel of your compassion. Help us to be worthy of your trust that we may be an instrument of peace and hope to all in Georgetown County. Give us courage to be an agent of change, to achieve your dream of transformation. Finally, we ask you to heal our land and restore faith and righteousness in our nation. This we ask in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. My pledge to allegiance, sacred life, and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and always.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as published?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. We begin with our special reports and presentations. We will have the presentation of our Innovation Award by Mr. Ackerman, our Human Resource Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we present the Innovation Award for Georgetown County. And this is one that we don't do very often. It's often earned, but not recognized. So we'd like to take this opportunity. An Innovation Award is given to an individual or a group of individuals who come up with a new creative way to solve a problem that we need solved for the betterment of our citizens or the county or whatever service we're providing. Tonight's Innovation Award goes to two groups of folks, actually. Our registration and elections folks and our IT department. They were faced with a challenge. They've had multiple complaints and inquiries about increasing transparency in the vote counting process. The problem was recognized. A solution was needed. And there are a lot of different ways that this problem could have been solved. You know, folks sell things and you can knock down walls and you can do all kinds of different stuff. But in true MacGyver fashion, they came together and they had a turkey baster, a bubble gum wrapper and a half a roll of duct tape and said, how can we fix this? They came up with a very innovative solution that actually in real time, you can see exactly everything that's going on back in the back room where the votes are being moved around and tabulated and this, that, and the other, and not just see the totals going up on a screen. So they did it with very little material, very little cost, but it's an extremely effective method to solve this problem. And for that, we'd like to recognize these groups for the innovation that they've shown that better the transparency for the elections when we have those upcoming next month. So thank you all to those folks. And I'd like to get them up front to get a photo if we could. Mr. Chair, if you will indulge us by walking Jackie, you're the photo person, down front. And I have representatives from both departments here tonight. If they'd come up front and let's get a picture. Everybody, don't be shy. Get them up on stage. Everybody take two steps.
Three, one, two, three.
Thanks again to the Vote and Retrition Office for their innovation. We'll move on down to the request to name the new auditorium of the Georgetown Library in honor of Jean Florine Moody. Our library, Mr. McEnville.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, members of County Council. The Library Board at its last meeting voted unanimously to recommend to County Council that the new auditorium at the Georgetown Library be named in honor of Mrs. Jean Florine Moody. They would like to have her name placed above the door to the new library, new library auditorium. And of course, the headquarters library, as you know, has been in the process of being renovated and expanded over the past six months or so. And this is now 2024, the 225th anniversary of the library system, which is one year older than the Library of Congress. And I can think of no better way than to commemorate this event than to rename that auditorium in honor of Mrs. Moody. You can see from the list of accomplishments that she was very civic minded. She was also very modest. She was also very frugal. And no one knew that she had millions and millions of dollars. And when she died, she left her church 1.4 million. She left an orphanage 1.4 million. And she left her library 1.4 million. And that was the impetus to County Council also doubling the amount through other means. And you all should come on a tour. In fact, perhaps we can arrange that of the library to see it still in its somewhat raw state and understand what a wonderful gift this is that Ms. Moody gave to the community. So my recommendation is to honor what your Georgetown Library Board has voted on unanimously and name that auditorium in honor of Mrs. Jean Florine Moody. Thank you. Any questions?
Any question from Council? Mr. McEnville. Thank you, Mr. McEnville.
Thank you very much.
You have heard the request from Mr. McEnville regarding your request in the new library auditorium at the Georgetown Library to the Jean Florine Moody Auditorium. Do we have a motion from Council regarding that request?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we rename or name the Georgetown Library to Jean Florine Moody Auditorium.
We have a motion from Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor to rename the Georgetown Library to Jean Florine Moody Auditorium? Please signify by raising your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Thanks again, Mr. McEnville. We'll move down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield. Here's her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address Council during the public input period should sign up with the Clerk of Council before the meeting is called to order. We ask that at the end of your time period, please conclude your comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for our public comment this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we do have seven speakers signed up this evening. As you stated, each will have up to three minutes. And our first speaker is Chris Spigner.
Hello, I'm Chris Spigner. And once again, I'm here to speak out on the boat landing ordinance. Council members, I would like to introduce you to Josh. I am hosting him as part of a flat student project for White Knoll Middle School in Lexington, South Carolina. I am supposed to introduce my flat student Josh to interesting things about Georgetown. I email him notes and pictures with him so that he is able to see our beautiful area and learn more about Georgetown. But he will even be able to watch this council meeting and see himself and how I am fighting for him, as well as locals and tourists to be able to board an affordable ecotourism boat to see and experience our pristine Wenyah Bay, our rivers, and our abundance of wildlife. And to also learn about the importance of the conservation and preservation of our natural resources and how to be the best steward for them in our future. Carroll Ashmore Campbell Marine Complex has the infrastructure to support our larger Coast Guard approved boats. There was a concern at the last meeting about county liability. Coast Guard certification requires a 200-ton marine vessel like the Rover to carry insurance that covers whole liability and 2 million in protection and indemnity. I do have a concern about a statement made by the county's attorney at our last meeting. His concern with allowing the larger boats would be opening up our public boat landings to commercial use. Well, I'm a little confused by his statement. The current proposed ordinance change allows use by six-pack boats, which are commercial boats. This means the county will be allowing commercial use at all our public landings for them. So why not the larger boats at just one landing? Presently, as written, the proposed ordinance will eliminate all ecotourism boating opportunities out of Georgetown County for larger families and groups. Please amend the proposed boat landing ordinance to allow the Carroll Ashmore Campbell landing be utilized for these larger boats. Let's save Georgetown County's nature-based tourism on the waterfront, Josh, our locals, and our valued tourist. Thank you.
John Sconyers?
Hi, how's everyone doing? My name's Captain John Sconyers. I own Aces Up Fishing Charters in Merle's Inlet, South Carolina. Started business in 2004. So this year will actually be 20 years that I have been using the boat ramp with not a problem so far. The proposed measures for the boat ramp will actually exclude me because I run a 34-foot vessel. It is a six-pack boat, so that would be included in the proposal. But the 34-foot part would exclude my business along with all the other businesses that are here. There's at least four to five here. And it would be not by the people than what it takes up to the parking lots or anything like that. It's still a six-pack boat. It's just, I'm going to be out of it because my boat is this much too big. And that's it. It's just because it's this much too big. There won't be any problems with, if it was this much too small, then at the end of fact of it, there would be no more taking up of parking places. It would still be a six-pack boat. So it's the length issue for us. We're still a six-pack boat. It's definitely not an insurance problem with the county. I spoke with my insurance agent. Our people are covered from when they step out of their car to when they get back into their car, if you have charter boat insurance. The only problem that the county would have if it's something that they haven't physically fixed with the boat ramp, and that would be a problem with anybody who came on the boat ramp. Would not be a residential, recreational, any charter, anything. That would still be the county's problem. But anything that would happen would be on the charter boat business. You have to have a charter boat insurance to run a charter vessel. So that is not, I'd heard that a couple people say that, and that could not be an issue. Actually, the only people that you would not have to worry about would be the charter boat people because they're covered under our insurance. So that's not a problem. Our only other way of getting around this would be to go to a marina or to a dock behind, say, Wahoos or something like that. This is just a few of us. There's not enough room currently with all of the marinas and all of the spaces left. We will be out of the business, just flat out, out, unless we trade our boats in for a smaller boat, which is just ludicrous for, it's the same exact thing. It's just this much difference. So we've just asked for you to take the 30-foot out of it if you're going to leave it in the ordinance and leave it just as a six-pack boat vessel at least. Going to the marina for myself and anyone else here would be about a $30,000 expense a year. They're charging $500 per foot per vessel per year. My boat would be $17,000 per year, plus 10% off at the top of every charter we run. Plus, right now, fuel is running $2 a gallon higher. And I've been in business a long time. That's over $30,000 just in slip fees and fuel. I cannot absorb $30,000 to give the marina for somebody else to profit off of that money. There's not that much money in this business. We are not millionaires. We are small businesses. Mine promotes another captain. Two families run off of my boat. That's, we don't make that much money. We can't give up $30,000. So please, take into, I know I'm out of time, but please take into the fact that you're really killing these small businesses by just a couple of feet. And it doesn't make any sense. There's no more, they're not losing any parking for it. And we just ask, you know, hey, please just help us out. I mean, I've been in business for 20 years and I haven't had a problem. 20 years. A lot of people haven't even lived here for 20 years. I mean, that's a long time. Sorry, I know I went over.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and allow me to speak. The reason I'm talking, use, first of all, I want to recognize my old man, which is our mayor to my right. And I ain't gonna be before you, Lon. The reason why I come to talk about, in my town, I'm 70 years old. In my town, I represent people. I don't represent color. I love everybody in my town. We need that EMS services back in the town. Because we just important, it's in a good air.
Tammy Hoy?
Hi, I'm Tammy Hoy, and I'm speaking for the ordinance for the vote. I'd like to start off by saying that I had a friend that had moved to Georgetown County in 2000. And I had lived in Ori County and played in Georgetown County for many years, but had never seen everything that Georgetown had to offer until I started spending my winters here more and more. Came back and started touring more, doing tours with Rover Chores. We have now finally bought a house here in Georgetown because we do love the area, the estuary, everything. We never would have been able to experience a lot of that without being able to go out on a shoreboat. We have family regularly visiting numerous times a year. Those numbers are larger than six passengers each time. And there's no way that you can afford $550 for four passengers to do a shelling and lighthouse cruise with a six-pack captain. It's just not going to happen for your normal, moderate family, you know? When we have guests, you know, we have two kids, three grandkids, and all of us and different friends. There's just no way you can afford it. And you have more than, that can accommodate, the boat can accommodate anyways. Although there's other charter boats operating out of Georgetown, you know, we've chosen to go and chosen to go with the most consistent, award-winning boat. And we have actually also ridden the 40-foot, 40-passenger vessel that picks up at Sandy Island Public Boat Landing and have visited Wilma's Cottage and taken tours of Sandy Island. That vessel, as I understand it, has not been ticketed nor targeted nor made to stop operating in Georgetown County also. So we are asking you to please take a look at all of this and consider what we have been asking you all along. Thank you very much for listening.
Alex B.
You are lost, you are splost. This splost committee does have two black people out of six, including only one woman out of six people on out of six people on this committee. Four members, a consultant and staff person are white men. The chairman that was elected, a white man from Paulies. The one woman, Ashley Nelson, mentioned she had planning commission third Thursday, and somehow it was set to have this meeting the first, second, and fourth Thursday. And somehow they now have three months to April 30th for people who know nothing about this are supposed to apply with all these projects to get by August 1st to the ballot. And the board members are begging you for more time. They want to rotate the meeting also through the county to the libraries, which Sampit was not even mentioned. So where are these magic projects supposed to appear to spend even more than the $67 million jail on projects all around the county when all these libraries, gym parks, and bike paths have already been rebuilt, replaced? And so where are the reparations? A $25 prize gift card from Ronnie Saber, Mal Hyman campaign at Brown's Ferry Parade doesn't cut it. These school magnet programs that they're talking about, that was a federal grant and flooding may be that as well. Now, also, can you imagine if you had to come to the back of this building as your library for one year? That's what you did to Georgetown City. No Wi-Fi, two rooms, and the gym is closed, full of books, so can't be used either. And this re-entry at the jail program, I don't know if that's the worst or best thing to be working with 12 people or possibly up to 30 from other parts of the state with no county connection, and they are building things with wooden boats. Would be nice as an incarcerated person to get outside, but it seems kind of like slavery time to me. Are they driving the county trucks for free or low wage? Can an inmate consent to that? If it's so great, why is it a tiny program? Very confusing. Also, Manchester UK Guardian newspaper sent a couple people to Gulliguchi Commission Meeting in Jacksonville because they're doing stories trying to acknowledge the founders of the paper got rich off cotton capital. You could Google that in England through slave people's work in the southeast. How are you learning the history, spreading that here? Do we have to list some more SC-250 Revolutionary War stuff where they skip over the Civil War and go back? The Gull Commission has only $250,000 budget, small. I went on the New Year's hike to Ramsey Grove State Park Advertise Bowl, which was the ultimate outsider state park fans that had responded. The White Ranger did mention slavery, but it was not stressed. It's about birding, hunting. They will do behind-the-scenes and archaeology digs. The house had some, about a dozen hotel bedrooms and a big study where I guess the SC electric and gas people, executives, used to stay. According to IAM Museum, they picked up a record of names of sharecroppers from Ramsey Grove such as Serena Moultrie, Ille Moultrie, Quash, Venus Shaw, Rebecca Gordine, Cornelia Frazier, Cupid Franklin, Miley Pyatt, Jeffrey Frazier, Sam Andrew Aaron, and Edward Washington, Hester, and Maria, and Bram Gatston, and others. What would Harriet Tubman do? More power to the people. MLK Parade on Saturday.
Good evening, Council. My comments are regarding paragraph eight, second reading of ordinances. A ordinance to amend the flexible design district to allow a larger retail store. Well, I believe that's going to be an Aldi's, although it's hard to find that in writing, but that's my information. If it isn't Aldi's, that's going to be a shopping destination for the entire county up and down the neck in Georgetown. As a destination shopper, shopping, it does require a bit of perusal to determine whether it's appropriate. The approval of this project is premature until the encroachment application for additional access on Pettigrew is reviewed by SC DOT. As far as I know, SC DOT has not received this application, and it hasn't been forwarded at this time. The larger issue is the safety of pedestrians and cyclists, predominantly from Parkersville. At the intersection of 17, there has been at least one death and continuous accidents. This development is adjacent to the entrance of a school and another existing shopping center. Any final approval must include an all-encompassing traffic plan that specifically addresses the mix of cars, cyclists, and pedestrians. Now, perhaps the developer and perhaps the Aldi stores would like to contribute to this in order to make a safe pedestrian, cyclist, and traffic intersection in that area of Pettigrew and 17. If that's not performed, there will be additional accidents and hopefully not deaths, but the additional traffic that this generates must be considered before approval.
Evening, y'all. Happy New Year. I am here on the same agenda item 8A, and I'm sure Ms. Richardson will go through this in her report, but you approved this project in 2015 at 35,250 feet of multiple buildings. It was modified by this council in 2017 to a single building of 35,962 feet, and then in 2019 modified back to the original 2015 plan. The current iteration before you makes that building smaller. The total building size being proposed is 19,432 feet with a potential for 2,800 feet of expansion and an additional 6,800 feet of an out parcel. So the total project would be 28,000 feet, or roughly 8,000 feet less than what is currently permitted. With regard to the second access, you have seen the revised site plan. We dropped our request for the second access and are not seeking a second access on Pettigrew. We made a commitment to the planning commission that if the potential user is, becomes unfunctional, we would revisit a major site plan approval, come back to this body, and apply for that secondary access if necessary. With regard to traffic, there was an extensive study done in 2017 by Kimley Horn that for the larger user, the 35,900-foot user, and it was measured all the intersections from Pettigrew and Waverly all the way through, and no additional traffic enhancements were recommended at that time. I think Ms. Richardson will confirm that with the reduction in size, we are carving about 1,000 trips a day out of that. So there is no real need to have an additional traffic study at this time. You've approved this several times already. This is the smallest iteration of it. This isn't national retailer. I do have jobs and compensation data that is available to the council if you have a question for me about that. We will make a commitment here as part of this flexible design modification to be cooperative with bike path easements and such. If Public Works determines future bike path expansion would need to be on this side of Pettigrew versus the other. The planning commission voted for approval for this six to one. There were only three comments that were negative, and as of this meeting, I am not aware of any additional comments submitted to planning, positive or negative for the project. This has already been approved several times for a retail location. This is not a new request. It is a different consolidation of building size, but still smaller than what you have already approved. I'm happy to answer questions after Ms. Richardson gives her presentation to you and be glad to provide any additional data that you need. Thank you.
That's our final speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And thank you all for your comments. We move on down to resolutions and proclamations.
Resolution number 24 dash 01. A resolution to rescind council's prior approval in relation to create a commission pursuant to SC Code 4-10-300 in sequence to consider proposals for funding capital projects within Georgetown County. We hear from our attorney, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the council may recall the last meeting, there was a motion made to rescind, and since this action was taken by council by resolution, it would require a resolution to unwind the prior resolution. In the open meeting, that request was made by Councilman Carolina Newton, so resolution was prepared pursuant to that request. And as we have the council now, happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council to our attorney?
No questions but a statement.
You can do it during the discussion period, really.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any question for our attorney, Mr. Watson? Okay. Well, you've heard a report from Mr. Watson. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance, to resolution number 24 dash 01?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved it. We approve resolution number 24 dash 01.
Here we have a motion from Councilor Newton to approve resolution number 24 dash 01. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilor Carolina. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This statement is being made to request the rescinding of resolution 2334 adopted by county council to establish the duly established capital project sales tax commission. The recent selection of commission members for the upcoming capital project sales tax referendum fails to provide fair representation to districts three and five, which includes the town municipality of Andrews, South Carolina. The county population per the 2020 census now is 63,404. Registered voters as of January 7th is 46,354. The six members of the Andrews Council have expressed their concerns that the current method does not afford representation for their town. Recent conversations have been reason why Carolina and Newton council members for Andrews had not fought for this representation, but that issue was not our call. County council is responsible was to collect three citizens, which was done. The resolution approved by council proposed that Georgetown City, Andrews, and Paulus Island each have one representative, but state law also sets out a formula that must be used to select the municipal representatives. Based on the formula and population, Georgetown got two members. Andrews with a population of 2,075, and Paulus Island with a population of 130. Thus, Andrews and Paulus Island are not eligible for any seats on the commission per the law. So under the law, the two Georgetown commission members must select the third commission member from outside their own municipality. Come forth Mayor McClary with two nominees and Mayor Henry with one nominee, so the Georgetown commission members select the nominee from Paulus Island, and the town of Andrews is shut out again. What's wrong with this picture? Maybe the law needs to be changed. On a historical note, the United States finally began allowing women to vote in 1920 after ratification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution. And the 24th Amendment, which was ratified in 1964, paved the way for the Voting Rights Act of 1965, which secured voting rights for adult citizens of all races and genders in the form of federal laws that enforce the amendments. Maybe this state law should also be changed to provide representation for the town of
Any other comment from council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If you would, just bear with me. We'll be covering quite a few things here. Thank you, Mr. Carolina, for those details. Just to, at first, to clarify a few things that you might have read in Gab News or Coastal Most of those articles always state Andrews without representation. Well, that is true, but Andrews only consists of 17% of District Three and 17% of District Five. That leaves 83% from District Three and Five are live outside the city limits of Andrews. When you read the articles, it kind of accentuates that we're just focusing on the town of Andrews, but we're not. We have 18,000 residents between those two districts, a large number of people. How did we get where we are tonight? Councilman Carolina did a great job explaining some of the details. When we passed the resolution for the CPST, council gets three selections. And like Councilman Carolina said, the city of Georgetown got two. And as of 2014 referendum that was passed, also the city of Georgetown got two. District Seven, since it would not be represented, would get one. District One, Two, and Six, we agreed, would get the other two. So the District Four, city of Georgetown, got two, which made a total of six. In 2014, the sixth member came from the west side of the county, which was in Andrews. And this is what we expected to happen this year. If this, if we would have known it was going to turn out like this, we never would have approved of the three council members that we voted on. When councillors Anderson, Mercado, and Elliott asked us to approve the two from the Walk Along Neck area, we obliged. We voted for those. As well, Chairman Marant, when you asked us to vote for yours, we did as well, because we expected the right thing to be done by the commission and appoint one from Andrews, just like in 2014. But as everyone knows now, that was not done, and the third one come from the Walk Along It's our fault for believing that commission would do the right thing. We take blame for that. In hindsight, if we would have known how this was going to turn out, we would have never voted for the three commission members that y'all requested. Now, everybody expects Councilman Carolina and myself to stay quiet and to go along with the process, and to tell over 18,000 residents that you're not worthy to even have one seat at the table, and that's all we're asking, one seat at the table. And believe me when I tell you, that is not going to happen. We're not going to go along with it. In, in two years, we're going to be celebrating our 250th birthday as a country. It's kind of ironic that we fought a war for taxation without representation, but here we are 248 years later, fighting the same battles. South Carolina, most of you might not know, but there was the second-most amount of battles in the Revolutionary War was fought right here in this state. You have, just within this county, you had family names like Marinos, Neesmith, Lambert's, Wilsons, Ward's, Cribbs, McCutches, Owenses, and many more to go along with that. Most of their descendants still live. A lot live on the western side of the county. And a lot of people say the greatest generation was the World War II generation. I don't disagree with that, but I don't think you can have that conversation without talking about these Americans that gave us the country that we have today. And a lot of their descendants still live in this county, this very county. Now, how could any of us with clear conscience tell them, you are not worthy to have a seat at the table to make the decisions on this CPST committee? How could we do that in clear conscience? For the last 30 years, Walk Along Neck, and I'm not bashing the Walk Along Neck, for the last 30 years, the Walk Along Neck has paid, as it stated earlier by Councilman Anderson, three-quarters of the property taxes in this county, the last 30 years. We've been here for 248 years. So who do you think paid those taxes before those 30 years ago? Those taxes were, this county was, was built and formed as it is today off the backs of hard-working people west of the waterway, mainly farmers and blue-collar workers. They worked for companies like Onita before it went out of business in the late 90s in Andrews. Thousands of people come through Onita and worked there. I was fortunate enough, I got to work three summers at Onita during the 70s while in high These are the people that we're telling, you're not worthy to have a seat at the table, that we'll look out after you. Well, we don't need to be looked out after. We need to have a seat. We need to have a seat at the table, just like everybody else. The women that worked at Onita, they were amazing. I got to see them. They set up one sewing machine every day, some for thirty, forty years, working their fingers to the bone, just to put food on the table, clothes on their children's back, and a roof over their head. Farmers from the west side of the county, you could speak all night just on what it takes to be a farmer, but most of the farmers work hours that most of us can't even comprehend. And these are the same people that we're telling, you're not worthy of a seat at the table. If I had my choice, give me the ladies sitting at the sewing machines day after day, give me the farmers that work, that destroy their bodies farming their entire life, put them at my table, I'll take them any day over to billionaires from Georgetown and the Walk Along Neck. I speak of these people because this is who I come from. I come from a farming family, and my mother was one of those women that sit at that sewing machine. And I seen her when she come home, could hardly grasp a glass of water to drink because her fingers were so stove-up from sewing all day long. It's hard to believe we're going to tell these people, you don't deserve a seat at the table to be represented. Let's take a look at a hypothetical. What would be happening tonight if the shoe was on the other foot? Say, we didn't have a representative from the Walk Along Neck, what would happen? Say we didn't have a representative from District Seven, what would happen? I think all of you know what would happen. This resolution would pass and it would be killed right here on the spot, because it's not right. This is not a black versus white. This is not Democrat versus Republican. This is a right versus wrong, simple as that. I've worked with each of you for quite a while on council. You're some of the finest people I've had the pleasure to work with. There's no doubt about that. What makes you guys come up here and take the abuse that we undertake for the little bit of pay that we do says a lot about you. And I respect each and every one of you. No matter how the vote goes tonight, you vote against me or you vote with me, I will still have the same amount of respect for each one of you. I think about the people that sat up here in our spots before us, and there's quite a few of them, the Hemingways, the Morants, you could go on and on. And now, the ones of you that have these seats now, I'm in awe of each one of you. Sometimes I don't even feel worthy to be sitting up here with you. But I'm proud to serve with you. We disagree a lot, that's what good government's about. We debate a lot, but when it comes down to it, I think each one of you will do the right thing. You always have, and I think you always will. Now, since we put forth this resolution to kill this committee, what's the plan? Well, this is the plan, and hear me out. We approve this resolution, which will in fact kill the CPST, and we can come back and do this thing right, because if we're not going to do it right, don't do it at all. If we don't, and we continue on with the CPST, out of all the negative press that it's already got, all the debates that's been going back and forth, you're going to endanger passing the lost referendum. If this one fails, more than likely, the lost referendum will fail as well, and we all know it's a good referendum. It will help all the property owners within the county of Georgetown. If we kill it now, we come back next year, we come back in twenty-five, we pass another resolution, putting the committee back together, and believe me, we will not make the same mistake the next time that we did this last time, with trusting people to do the right thing, and we can fix that at the beginning of the next resolution. It might seem complicated to those that have not been dealing with this, but that's as simple as I think I can make it. We kill it, we kill it tonight, we start back over a new next year. Let's get seven council members behind the lost tax referendum that we have coming up in November, and we can pass it. If we do not kill this resolution, then you're going to endanger both of them failing, because there's no way that you can leave eighteen thousand residents unrepresented on this committee. It's just not right. You wouldn't stand for it for your district, you wouldn't stand for it for the Walk Along Neck, so how can you expect myself as well as Councilman Carolina to support it? In closing, Mr. Chairman, I want to tell the council members, with every fiber of my body, I believe the way this was done is wrong. There's no way else to put it. Each one of you have a tough decision tonight. Anytime we take a vote, most of the time, we got people for us, we got people against us, no matter what we do. We have to do what we think's right, and I think this is a pretty cut-and-dry scenario we're dealing with. I want each one of you to know, no matter how the vote turns out, I still respect each one of you and feel proud to serve with you on council. And in closing, and just like to say, God bless each and every one of you. Thank you.
Any other discussions from council?
I've got a question for Mr. Watson, maybe, can you all hear me? Looking at what this is about tonight is, is the Resolution twenty-three thirty-four to create a six-member Capital Project Sales Tax Commission is not actually, I don't think, to would stop the entire effort to do the sales tax referendum, would it?
The CPST referendum specifically, you mean?
I can't quite catch what you're saying there.
Make sure this, the CPST referendum specifically, you mean?
Yeah, this is, I thought we were just voting on approving this commission, is what we deferred from last week, right?
Yes, sir. Previously, the council had passed a resolution to create the commission, and under the statutory scheme, the commission's created, they do their studies, they come back and present issues for referendum on the ballot. So, right, but this resolution would unwind that, and I've looked into some Attorney General opinions on this. They don't address this question specifically, but they do generally address, once the commission comes about with referendums, then, excuse me, with proposals, I think the council has to accept those, but the council does have discretion at this stage with regards to whether to proceed or not, or ultimately whether to accept the proposals of the commission if it were to remain.
So, if we vote to stop this, then we're really stopping the entire effort for this capital sales tax referendum?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood that.
And that's, Councilman, that would, we approve this resolution, it will not be, the committee will be disbanded, and it will not be on the November ballot.
I'm sorry, you broke up there a little bit, but let me repeat what I think was the question.
It will not be on the November ballot.
Your question was that the committee, or the commission, I think, is what you mean. The commission would be disbanded and would not be on the ballot, is that the question?
Yes.
As I understand it, yes, sir, that would be the effect. I would want to go back, like I said, this specific issue that I have found so far has not been addressed, but I think that is correct, based on what I've researched so far.
But it would have no bearing whatsoever on the lost referendum?
They're two separate things, two separate statutory proceedings.
Make sure everybody understands that.
Let me ask something, based on what you just said, Counselor. It appears as though that the purpose of the committee is to come up with a list of items which would be presented by the entities for council to approve, so council has to write at the end to accept or reject those particular proposals?
Correct.
Okay, so if a particular area of the county is not being represented by those particular proposals, council can just decline the entire matter at that particular time and take it away from their proposed referendum?
Well, the reason I'm hesitating, I'm thinking about the way you framed that question.
Okay, let me phrase it differently.
Yeah, maybe.
What I'm asking is, if the committee were to come back with certain proposals, can council just decline those particular proposals?
Yes, sir, I think you have to take it as a whole.
Okay, well, can council just decide not to go forward with the referendum at that point?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, if hypothetically, if a particular area of the county is not represented, then council can decide at that particular time to just kill the referendum?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from council?
I'd just like to add that, based on what you just said, that if we vote to rescind this, we're killing the entire referendum.
At this one?
You concur with that.
The CPST referendum only.
At this point?
Yes.
Now, so, are we saying then that we may come back at the next meeting and have another resolution to have a capital sales tax referendum?
No, that's not what my question was directed at, again, but the question was, after all the proposals have been presented, and council can decide not to put it on the ballot at that particular time?
It would be.
In a referendum.
Yeah, in other words, if we decide that we're going to go forward with this and reject this resolution and keep the commission as it is, then down the road, we'd have a commission, but we could also make the decision at the end to terminate the sales tax referendum.
Now, if the resolution, as my understanding, counsel can correct me, if we decide to vote in favor of the resolution that's being presented, then we will no longer have that committee, we'd be disbanding the committee at this point. The question was, if we were to go forward with the referendum as it is, I mean, as the resolution as it is, twenty-three thirty-four as is, whether we would be able to not put the proposals on the ballot as a referendum when they come back with their proposals, if we see that there's a sector that's not adequately represented? The answer to that is yes.
Yeah, we'll have the final determination.
Right.
Right.
So, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
So, killing it tonight would kill the entire committee, and we want to get the opportunity to see what type of project would be presented, nor would we get the opportunity to see whether all sections of the county is adequately represented.
Right, and if we kill the committee and we don't come back and create a different committee, which I don't know how we can do, based on the fact that we followed the law the first time, then we won't be able to elect another committee.
And my understanding, the third party was selected from the members the city of Georgetown proposed, is that correct?
Selected? Yes, sir.
Not council?
Correct. Council selected two, then under the statutory formula, the city of Georgetown was allowed to select two, and then those two commission members from the city of Georgetown selected the final, the third or sixth total for the commission.
The council selected three.
Right.
The Walk Along Neck, one from District Seven.
Did I say two? I'm sorry, yes, county council selected three, city of Georgetown two, and those two selected the final or the sixth.
Well, the issue is getting representation for the town of Andrews. Getting representation for the town of Andrews. The mayor submitted two candidates to the city, along with mayor selected one from Paulus Island. Out of two selected for Andrews, even one, Andrews got none. Andrews got none. Taxation without representation.
And those elections were presented to the city of Georgetown, am I correct?
Correct. Correct.
Let's move on. Any further discussion?
Well, but what we did, we went through the process, which was the legal way to go, and we came up with the six members we've got right now. So, tonight, we're going to either vote to keep that commission intact, or we'll get rid of that commission, and if we get rid of that commission, I don't know how we go back and start the process all over again.
Councilman Anderson, we start the process back over next year.
Next year.
Next year.
Yeah. Okay, that's, I guess we can do that in, that's not a, is that an off-election year? Can we do that in twenty-five?
It has to be a general election.
Has to be a general election, and that, it's going to be two years, I think. Which would be twenty-six. So, I'm just laying all the cards out here on the table.
Everybody to understand.
But Raymond, I totally agree with you that if we decide to nix this committee, we've got to wait two years.
It's, two years sounds like a long time. This referendum is an eight-year referendum, and we've started off on the wrong foot. We're just, we're better than this. We can do better. Another year and a half, we can pass another resolution, and we can do this thing right.
But also, Raymond, if we see that the sector of the county is not adequately represented, can't we just kill it at the end?
Yeah, if you go that far, really, no matter what you do on the west side of the county, it's going to be tainted. And I know there's some big items, big items going to be requested from the city of Georgetown and Walk Along Neck, and rightly so, I'm not disowning that, but the whole process is tainted from the get-go. We've had too much negativity on it, and you're going to endanger this failing, and you're going to endanger the lost referendum failing as well. And if you're willing to take that chance, and there is a chance, you have to understand that, and I think we should get together and... that, and I think we should, we should get together and, as seven council members, and support the lost referendum 100%, push it through. I've already held, uh, one big town hall meeting, and it was very receptive, but, um, the position that Councilman Carolina and myself have put on, there's no way we can support the CPST. If they go in that ballot box, there's a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of confusion on which one is which. Vote for this one, don't vote for that one. And a lot of people already, anytime they see a tax, it's automatically no, no matter what it's gonna do. And I'm as conservative as anybody, and this lost referendum is a good tax, because it helps the property owner, no matter if it's a boat, car, mobile home, house, whatever. It will reduce your taxes. And we're going to, we going, we're going to endanger that referendum by allowing the CPST to continue as it, in its present form. And, and I urge each one of you to, to really think about what, what we're doing here. I don't wanna get here in November and nothing passes.
Thanks.
Councillor?
Yes.
Um, did you, did, did I hear you say that, um, that you had, you're getting, you're getting, uh, vibes from the people out in the county that, uh, we won't be able to pass this capital sales tax referendum if we go through with this?
Yes, they're, they're not, you got a huge area that will not support the CPST referendum, just because there's, there's, they do not have a seat at the table. You know, we, we have areas, and, and I'm not saying anything negative about the fine people that have agreed to serve on this committee, 'cause it's gonna take a lot of their personal time away to do that, and they should be commended for it. But they know very little concerning District Three and District Five. I could name 20 communities right now, very few on that committee would even know what part of the county they're in, much less what their needs are.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had also-
Can I say something?
Councilman McCarter.
First of all, I appreciate both of your comments, um, and I would hope that if this does passes, that, knowing the needs of this county, that you would both support it once it does pass, irrespective of our disagreement on the resolution. Um, but I'd also like to make a statement that the representatives that are on the committee, um, at least the two that are from the Walkham on Neck, um, are multi-generational from this county, and excluding the Town of Paulies person, 'cause I don't know their background, um, but are from the western part. So I think that there is representation, albeit the individuals' residents may not be in the western part of the county. However, there is representation there, and I think to Chairman Morant's point, that at a later date, if the projects requested are not representative of the western part of the county and the county overall, that we won't pass it.
The, the longer this goes, the, the more you endanger the lost referendum from passing, in my opinion.
I think we all need to get behind it if they pass.
And the, um, there, the needs of the western part of the county are so much different than Walkham on Neck and Georgetown. We, we have people that can't even drink water out their own faucet. That anytime it rains, they go two or three days without being able to use your, use their bathrooms.
That's exactly why it's critical that this passes.
And the, the people on that committee could not even begin to comprehend that, because they're, they're not familiar with the area. And unless you have someone represented at that table from that area, familiar with the western part of the county, I don't think there's any way you could rightfully give them representation. And this, and, and we're talking a year and a, year and a half, year and 10 months from now, we come back and, and start this process. I think it is a smart move in order to pass the lost referendum in November, and we come back two years later. May- maybe we're a little overanxious when we put two of them together anyway, but we pass one now, and, and another one in two years, with seven council members behind it versus, um, 30% of your, um, population gonna be against it. And the last 2012, I think it was, was kinda like this. It was not done properly, and it was defeated at the ballot box. They learned their lesson, they come back in 2014, and every district was represented, and it passed. Just one referendum, not two, but one. And I think we, we need to take a hard look at our, our mistakes of the past.
Are there any further, are there further discussion regarding something different, a different perspective? We understand your positions, we need to move on.
No. May I say this, Mr. Chairman? The issue is appearance. The issue is appearance. In my communities, and what they have read about the committee's selection, they say they are not represented. And just to hope and pray that you get a committee in place that would be understanding of the situation of the people in our respective districts Three and Five, you don't know if it's gonna happen or not. We have major issues, as colleague mentioned-
Well, let's, let's move on.
Let me just finish, please, let me finish.
Because the committee, the committee is gonna present-
Because when you have issues of sewage-
Projects.
Raw sewage in districts-
Projects or not.
Raw sewage in districts with people who never experienced, never understood the committee makeup, they're not taking it.
I think you're making an assumption in such respect that they were not gonna-
There's no assumption, it's reality of what's out there in the community.
Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I, I request a roll call vote.
Okay, that's fine. We have a motion on the floor, um, regarding Resolution Number 24 dash zero one. Okay, and Councilman Newton has called for a roll call vote, so we would just state our position, deciding with councillor. Let's see, let's start. Councilman Elliott. No, we'll start with councillor Anderson, I'm sorry. It's a roll call vote.
Roll call vote. I'm gonna vote to, uh, wanna make sure I get this right. I'm gonna vote to, uh, rescind this.
Councillor. McCarter?
Vote to keep it.
Councillor Johnson?
Vote no.
Carolina?
Yes.
Approve it.
Okay. Newton?
Approve.
Elliott?
I vote nay.
And I vote no. All right. So we have a four-three vote.
For sake of the clerk and myself, can we confirm that yea vote or keep, yea vote is to keep it or to, well, let's back up. The motion is, that the resolution is to rescind. Is to pass the resolution, so a yea vote is to pass the resolution to rescind. So Mr. Anderson, when you said you wanted to vote-
That's a yea vote.
Okay. McCarter, nay?
Nay.
Senator Jean Johnson, nay? Mr. Morant, nay?
Yes.
Mr. Carolina, yea?
Yea.
Mr. Raymond Newton, yea vote?
Yea.
Mr. Clint Elliott?
Nay.
Nay? All right, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on down to our third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 23 dash 38, and ordinance to amend Chapter Six, Section Six dash Three of the Georgetown County Code of Ordinances pertaining to public boat landing regulations. Councillor Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this matter's been on a few times before, there's been no changes to the, uh, resolution that was proposed prior. Take any questions if you have.
Any questions for Attorney Watson regarding ordinance number 23 dash 38? Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23 dash 38?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we defer once again, ordinance number 23 dash 38.
We have a motion from Councillor Newton to defer ordinance number 23 dash 38. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from councillor Carolina, any discussion?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, for the ones listening, that this is a good thing. We have some details, we have been fighting over this, debating this for quite, and we, we thank each one of you for coming out and speaking, um, about the boat landing issues. And we wanna do it right the first time, so we do not have to go back. So do not think this is a bad thing, but we will, we will get everything hashed out, and I promise you that.
All in favor of deferring ordinance number 23 dash 38 pursuant to the motion by Councillor Newton? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. And we're going down to ordinance number 23 dash 42, to amend the future land use map for a 5.13 acre parcel located at 999 Aviation Boulevard, further identified as TMS number 01 dash 0447 dash 00 dash 00 dash 00 from industrial to medium density residential. Ms. Richardson?
Is that better?
Yes.
Um, this, I will do item seven B and seven C together. This is a request from Mr. David Topkins to rezone one parcel, 5.13 acres from LI to MR10. As you said, this property is located on Aviation Boulevard in the Maryville section. Um, there have been no changes to this request since second reading, and I will just remind you that the planning commission voted five to zero to recommend approval for the rezoning change, and they also voted five to zero to recommend redesignating this track on the future land use map from industrial to medium density residential.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Richardson, councillor? Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23 dash 42?
So moved.
Move for approval of ordinance number 23 dash 42 from councillor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from councillor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. And I thank you, this guy's ordinance number 23 dash 43 also?
Yes, sir, that's the rezoning.
Okay. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23 dash 43?
So moved.
It's moved by councillor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Carries. We are going down to ordinance number 23 dash 44. Attorney Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is related to a, um, industrial park, uh, MCIP agreement with Ory County. It's been in place for a while. This is simply to amend that agreement. They are expanding the park, I think the, um, footprint of the park is getting a little bit bigger. Um, we do receive some, uh, revenues from that park, but it's in Ory County and primarily managed by them.
Thank you. Any questions for Attorney Watson? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23 dash 44? The third reading approval?
So moved.
It's moved by councillor McCarter for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Elliott. Is there a motion to amend, to incorporate, to revise text of that particular ordinance?
So moved.
It's moved by councillor McCarter for the amendment. Is there a second of the amendment?
Second.
Second by councillor Elliott. We are first voting the amendment. Any discussion regarding the amendment? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll now go back to the original motion with the amendment. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We're going down to your second reading of ordinances, ordinance number 23 dash 45. Ms. Richardson?
Uh, yes, sir, this is a request from Dan Stacy. He is agent for Three J Seven B Real Estate, and the request is to amend the Pavilion Square Flexible Design District in order to allow for a larger retail store. And this property, as you know, is located on the west side of Highway 17, just south, Pettigrew Drive in Paulies. The tract is just over four acres, it contains one parcel that is currently undeveloped, the front of the tract is wooded, the rear has been cleared. This, as Mr. Stacy stated, this property does have some history and background. Um, council first rezoned the tract from commercial zoning to the FDD back in June of 2015, and that was to allow for multiple commercial uses, office and retail and restaurant. They again amended the FDD in 2017 to allow for a grocery store on the site. The applicant came back in 2019 to amend it again, to revert back to the original plan from 2015 with a few minor changes, um, that would allow for, again, the mix of restaurant, retail and office space, and that is what is currently approved today, and a coffee shop was recently constructed on one of the out parcels of the FDD. Um, the original approval included a total of 35,250 square feet for the 4.82 acre tract. In 2017, the amendment was for that entire tract and included one store that contained 35,962 square feet, uh, so there was an increase at that time, a small increase. In 2019, that grocery store backed out, and the owner came back and amended the FDD, like I said, to revert back to the 2015 approval and back to the 35,250. Today's request is for a 19,432 square foot retail store at the rear of the parcel. They're also showing an expansion area of 2,800 square feet and an additional future retailer office building on the out parcel on the Highway 17 frontage. Um, this change in the layout necessitated yet another amendment to the FDD. The project, of course, falls within our commercial overlay zone, so both, the, both proposed buildings will have to comply with the architectural requirements, which includes a 612 pitch requirement for the 50% of the roof. Um, the plan as shown does meet the setbacks for this FDD, which are 90 off Highway 17, 33 off Pettigrew, 10-foot side yard and 15-foot rear yard. The applicant's original submittal, um, I think both copies are in your packet, showed two access points for the retail store off Pettigrew Drive. Um, one of those access points, the one that is installed today, has been previously approved by DOT. Um, DOT tells me that that access is not completely installed at this time, it does need some additional work. Um, the second access point was not approved, and as Mr. Stacy said, at, with some discussion with the planning commission, um, they agreed to remove that second access. Our discussions with DOT indicated that a second approval there on Pettigrew would be unlikely. The plan also shows a shared access to the existing coffee shop. Um, the previous plan did also have a proposed stubout to the adjacent auto sales business that's located to the south, and they have since included that connection on their proposed plan. They're showing 102 parking spaces for the retail store in the rear, which includes four handicap spaces. Um, the requirement for this FDD is a parking space for every 200 square feet of retail stores, which comes to 111 spaces without the expansion. Um, again, we don't know the exact use for the front, um, retail or office site at this time, so we cannot make that parking calculation yet. Um, they are within the purview and purview requirement of 3070 for the FDD. An FDD does require additional landscaping, one and a half times the regular requirement. Um, they have not sent in a landscape plan yet, but we do think some additional islands may be needed in order to meet that requirement. The signage will also need to meet the commercial overlay requirements. Um, there is one, there are two new freestanding signs, one will be on Highway 17 and one will be on Pettigrew. Uh, those will need to be monument-style signs. Those will need to be monument-style signs, and the building signs will need to meet the requirements of the general commercial section of the zoning ordinance. There was a traffic impact analysis done for this development back in 2015 at that time. And remember, that was the mixed-use plan. It showed a total of 3,295 annual daily trips. In 2017, when the grocery store was proposed, it showed a total of 3,561 trips. Staff's calculation for this proposed use comes to 2,524 ADTs. Remember, this is a smaller retail store that's shown, and that is a reduction of just over 1,000 trips from the 2017 approval. Those previous traffic studies studied the adjacent intersections and did not recommend any traffic improvements. If this amendment is approved, staff is recommending the following conditions for the ordinance: the landscaping shown at one and a half times the required amount, obviously no construction until that landscape plan is approved. They would need to meet the minimum requirements of the parking ordinance based on the size of the proposed buildings, and the parking lot lighting should be shielded from adjacent properties. The connection to the south that has been shown, and the 30/70 pervious and pervious ratio, final approvals from the necessary agencies, and of course, all the structures and signage involved would meet the commercial quarter overlay standards. The Planning Commission met and held a public hearing on this back in November. There were three people who spoke at that meeting with concerns about traffic, pedestrian activity, and the number of other similar stores in the area. The commission voted 5 to 1 to approve the staff recommendation and to include the one curb cut on Pettigrew Drive. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I've got a few questions, and I'll take them, I think, the simplest first, and that's, did you mention anything about stormwater?
I think I did skip over the stormwater. Stormwater issued a land disturbance permit for this site back in 2015, and that site work at the time was done and completed. Stormwater has indicated that they will need to submit a modification to that existing permit for the new layout, to make sure they haven't increased the impervious beyond what was approved.
And, you know, you and I have talked about all the problems we've got in that area with stormwater as far as which way it's going from 17, et cetera. So I'd like to sit down with you and talk a little bit more about that. I have no problem with what we're going to use this facility for, but I am concerned about the stormwater, because we know what we did 10 years ago there at that flow over Kings River Road into the lake there at Heritage. We spent a lot of money. 10 years later, we're going to have to do it again. So I'm getting real sensitive, all of this stormwater stuff. Now, the other thing I wanted to discuss was the traffic situation, and Mr. Stacy's out here. I have, what I was wondering, I just got a chance to look at the site plan. I didn't know we had a conceptual site plan. And I was hoping that we had, you know, the way this thing, it's kind of, it has egress-ingress from Pettigrew, but I was hoping that we'd have egress-on to 17 from where this new building's going to be. So I would like to, Dan, if you don't mind, I would like, we don't need to discuss this now, but I'd just like to sit down with you, because I am concerned... Okay, well, then I'll hold my points until I understand better what the deal is. I see that.
That's already paid.
But yeah, but that's the egress for their property there at the, you know, and this is a different grouping here. That's for that little coffee shop. And I don't know that they'll want people running through that, although that might happen. But we can discuss that. I'd like to get that cleared up, if we could. Other than that, I'm fine with where we are right now.
I had a quick question on the islands that you mentioned. If there's a need for additional islands based on the landscape plan, there's, in the back of the building, there's future expansion. Is that where the parking would potentially be? And I don't know if Mr. Stacy can speak to that.
In terms of landscape islands?
Correct.
Typically, our ordinance, the way it falls out, it requires a landscape island about every 10 spaces. And I think, as I was counting here, they've got some stretches where they're going to need to add an island in there. I think that expansion area is a potential building expansion.
I'm just wondering where the parking would be. So my question is, since Mr. Stacy is here, would it go in the back? And is that something that planning would address in the future?
Yes, it could go in the back, but our recommendation, and the way it's written in the ordinance now, is that they would have to meet the ordinance requirements. So if they're either going to have to accommodate the additional parking on the site, or they would have to reduce the size of the building. They may not be able to accommodate that expansion. And it may depend on what goes on this other parcel as well. This is a FTD, so part of that is being able to share parking. And we have a criteria for that. There's a chart in our ordinance that spells out how it can be shared, depending on what the uses are. So they may be able to demonstrate that as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any additional questions for Ms. Richardson? You heard a report from Ms. Richardson regarding ordinance Number 23-45. Does there a motion pertaining to it?
So moved.
Move for approval of ordinance Number 23-45 by Council Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Mercado. Any further discussion, or any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go down to first reading of ordinances, which I will read into the record by title only, ordinance Number 24-01, to amend the future land use map for three parcels located at 46 Channel Bluff Avenue and 13236 Ocean Highway, identified as TMS Number 04-0141-076-0000, from medium density residential to transitional. And ordinance Number 24-02, to rezone three parcels located at 13236 Ocean Highway and 46 Channel Bluff Avenue in Pollys Island, TMS Number 04-0141-076-0000, from 10,000 square feet residential and general commercial to neighborhood commercial. We move down to our approval of minutes. Is there a motion regarding our minutes of December 12, 2023?
So moved.
Is move for approval of those particular regular council meeting of December 12, 2023 by Council Elliot, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Any further business to come before council pertaining to our agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to request of council to please research through the Attorney General an opinion needed on dual office holding. As for the future, when a candidate is presented and should they hold an office in another municipality and also would be holding a position on the capital project sales tax.
Any further business to come before council pertaining to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Move by Council Mercado, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Newton?
Carolina.
Oh, Carolina, I'm sorry. Any discussion regarding the adjournment? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? You stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here.